You know, based on opinion. So, we're making some great progress there. I think you're gonna see it in the next couple of years in patient outcomes when those increased communication systems, better governing, better franchise agreement, and that will make a big difference for the region.
Turning to the more personal side of Julia Ratty, how have you been able to balance your time? You have a full-time job that's very demanding, and yet you, as a public servant, there's also some demands put on you in that realm. So, have you been able, have you learned anything about yourself? Have you learned to, you know, some new time management skills? Tell us a little bit about that.
I have the most detailed color-coded calendar that you have ever seen. It is, it is a work of art, for sure. You know, it certainly, there, there, there is that aspect of it where you're trying to, if you will, serve a couple of masters, and, you know, you've got your full-time job. And in my case, of course, I worked for the Girl Scouts of the USA. I was the CEO of the Girl Scouts Council here. And what really made it work for me is that it's more about, almost, it's more about making the world a better place. And so whether I'm sitting in the chair as a Spark City Council member, or I'm working with the Girl Scouts to help the young women advance their next community service project to make sure that we have the infrastructure that allows them to do that, it really is all about strengthening our community. And so I found that there were lots of places where those two roles blended nicely for me to just be out in the community and working on issues. And that might be as the CEO of the Girl Scouts, or in my current role, or that might be as a city council member. And then there were other places where, you know, it really was just a manner of making sure that the top priorities got the attention. And so I feel like I did a good job of keeping that balance and making sure that, you know, the people, the voters who put me here got the responsiveness that they deserved from staff, they got my time and attention, and we got some things done.
What's your perspective on this notion of regional cooperation relationships between Sparks, Reno, Washoe County, and elsewhere?
You know, I think, I think we've made some great progress in some areas, and I think there's still some work to do in others. And, you know, I think anytime you get one of those really tough, tough issues where not everybody gets what they were looking for out of the final decisions, sometimes that can be a setback. But I have a lot of faith in the people who step up to do these jobs, and I think that it's gonna be fine.
Councilwoman Ratty, thank you for your help and your service, and it's been a pleasure working alongside with you. You've done a remarkable job, you really have, and we're, we're gonna miss you, and we're very proud that we've had Julia Ratty, one of the few women, I want to add, that has had the privilege to serve on the Spark City Council. So, thank you for all, for all that you do.
Thanks, Adam. I've really, really enjoyed my time as a city council member. It's something I'll cherish for the rest of my life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Make sure you follow us on all our social media channels. From all of us at the City of Sparks, thanks for watching. It's another fantastic day right here in the city of Sparks, Nevada. We have a great program lined up for you on this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Stay tuned. Every commercial and residential structure in this city must be safe for workers, customers, and residents. How does the city make sure that buildings are safe and up to standards? Meet the man in charge of making sure that you're safe inside.
Public safety is the number-one priority for the City of Sparks. And while most folks think of the police officers and firefighters who protect them, the City of Sparks Building and Safety Division also works hard to protect residents.
Yes, I'm definitely passionate about the site, the safety portion of what we do for the building department. When a person walks into a building, they assume that the building they're walking into is safe, and that they're not gonna have to encounter any hazards within the building. And like shock, shock, electrical shock, that they can assume that, that if there's an emergency inside the building, that there's gonna be adequate exiting for them to egress the building safely. So, as part of that, we're making sure that people that are coming to the City of Sparks, whether it's the citizens or the visitors, that the built environment is safe.
The Sparks Building and Safety Division has several responsibilities to ensure the structural safety and building code compliance of all commercial and residential property. The city will not sign off on any project until everything is up to proper safety and operational standards. So, how are building projects evaluated and inspected, and what are building inspectors looking for?
Anything that's being built in the City of Sparks, we regulate. So, the first process in, with the permit process is to provide plans to the Sparks Building and Safety Division, which we review for compliance with the codes. And then off of those plans, the inspectors go out, and we inspect the structural components of a building, such as the roof, the walls, the foundation. Then we also inspect the electrical systems, which includes lights, electrical service, switches, receptacles. And we, all those components are looked at for life safety. We also inspect the plumbing systems, plumbing systems for the piping, plumbing piping, water, the drain pipes, and any kind of drains, faucets, you know, any kind of a plumbing fixture. Then we also look at the mechanical system, which includes the air conditioning systems in a building, which includes the mechanical units themselves, the ductwork that distributes the air, and any kind of return features of the mechanical system.
Sometimes a project doesn't pass inspection.
When they do the inspection, the inspection writes what's known as a correction notice. Correction notice has the things that need to be fixed on a project. So, he'll hand over the correction notice to the permit holder, they'll make sure items get corrected, and then they'll call back in for a re-inspection of those items that need to be corrected.
While most construction projects are fairly straightforward, sometimes city inspectors get to think outside of the box.
You know, we really do a wide variety of inspections on a lot of different projects. One of them would be the new IMAX Theater that's just recently been built in Sparks. That isn't your typical building warehouse. So, it's, it's, in that aspect, it's interesting because we have a really high volume of people that will be in a building at once, and so we have to make sure that the people can exit properly out of there in case of an emergency. At Wild Island Water Park, we do inspect the structures and the slides themselves, and they submit plans to us. We take a look at those plans and look at the structural integrity of the large stairs that climb up to the slides. We also look at the connection of the slides to those structures.
Many Sparks homeowners want to make improvements to their homes, and Miranda and his team have some valuable advice to consider when thinking about doing any home improvement project in the City of Sparks.
If you're gonna do any kind of a small project on your house, such as change out your water heater, or convert your garage into office space, you really, before you open your toolbox, you need to ask yourself a question: Do I need a permit? Because permits are required for many of those small construction projects that you do around the house.
Sparks Building Inspectors play a vital role behind the scenes to ensure a high quality of life in our city. For more information, log on to the city's website or call 353-555.
Spotlight on Sparks recently sat down with Lieutenant Governor Mark Hutchinson of the Gray State of Nevada, talked about an array of issues and all the exciting things that are happening right here in northern Nevada. Here's what he had to say.
The role of the Lieutenant Governor is to serve as a member of the executive branch of government. When you think about the judiciary and the legislative branch, and I serve in the executive branch of government, but I also have one foot in the legislative branch. So, I serve as the Lieutenant Governor, the executive branch, but I'm also the President of the State Senate. And so it's a very unique position that way, where you have responsibilities and duties in the executive branch of government, as well as in the legislative branch of government. And so during the course of the legislature, I will preside over all the floor sessions in the State Senate and direct the proceedings there in the Senate, and the arguments, and the votes that occur in the Senate. And then I'm also the Chairman of the Nevada Commission on Tourism. And as you know, Adam, tourism continues to be the number-one industry in the state of Nevada. Many, many jobs depend upon that industry, and I love spending time on tourism and strengthening tourism, both in the urban areas, but also in the rural areas. One of the real focuses for the Nevada Commission on Tourism is rural tourism, and increasing that. I also serve as the Vice Chairman of the Board of Transportation. So, all things related to Nevada Department of Transportation, and the projects that happen there, and the policy that's being set is what occurs at that board. And I'm also a member of the Board of Economic Development, which statewide is charged with bringing in new businesses to the state of Nevada, diversifying our economy, expanding existing businesses in the state of Nevada, and really doing all we can to create jobs. And then recently, I became a member of the Commission on Homeland Security, which is the commission that is charged with implementing policy and funding priorities for anti-terrorism programs here in the state of Nevada. First, I think that local governments are the, are the best place for so much to happen because they're closest to the people. And that's where I think the founding fathers of this country intended most government to occur, is at the closest level to people, local governments, in the cities, in the school districts. And that's where good policy is made, and I think that's where, when we are at our best as government, much of what we do in government occurs. And so I interact on a regular basis with, with local government officials. For example, in economic development, I have gone all over the state and worked with local leaders, local government leaders, but also local business leaders, who in connection with their local governments, create the policies and create the programs and, and set the priorities for the economic developments within each of those communities. So, I've, I've, I've worked closely with local governments that way, and it's an important way for us to interact with, with state and local agencies. The question was first surfaced in terms of the economic incentives and the tax incentives to get Tesla here to northern Nevada. So, I was involved in legislative process with, with Tesla, continued to be involved in the, in the executive branch of government with Tesla as Lieutenant Governor. And so, you know, that's the biggest economic development and the biggest issue, and the biggest business opportunities that we have in Sparks in a very, very long time. And it has really, as you well know, in Sparks, just created a real synergy, a real sort of ecosystem that now we've got advanced manufacturing in Sparks. We've got an advanced manufacturing so close to the workforce there that we're gonna see workforce development emphasized in Sparks and northern Nevada in a major way, where we're gonna train now the next generation of workers to be not only in Tesla, but in these other advanced manufacturing facilities. The other thing I would say about Sparks and northern Nevada is it's got a real entrepreneurial community here, probably more so than anywhere else in the state that I've seen. Sparks, Reno, northern Nevada, have this entrepreneurial spirit, these startup companies. You hear about Startup Row, you hear about the Innovation Center, you hear about what's going on at UNR with all this entrepreneurial energy. And I think Sparks has got a very bright future, as we really emphasize more and more entrepreneurship and startup companies in northern Nevada. Transportation is a vital part of what we do in government. It's one of the fundamental things that we have gotta be sure that we are getting people to and from where they want to go in a very efficient manner. And so, we have undertaken, as a state, just tremendous projects now, really simultaneously in transportation, not only down south, but up, but up north. The biggest one we have right now is the, is the construction of USA Parkway. And that's gonna connect, really, I mean, I-80 right at Sparks, that will take it all the way down through to Highway 50, and will provide that corridor now, a transportation corridor now, which I think will increase business and economic development in Sparks that hasn't been there before because of the transportation issues. And we're also looking at, you know, larger-scale transportation issues when it comes to the new, the new economy and the new modes of transportation. In this last legislative session, as you know, there was a lot of discussion about the on-demand transportation companies like Uber and like Lyft. The legislature has addressed those issues, will continue to address those issues. As we see those companies come into the state, there's a lot of policy issues that need to be worked out. But that's, you know, the next generation of transportation that is gonna come, not only to Sparks, but throughout Nevada. We're also continuing to work as NDOT seeks to improve the road conditions and seeks to improve the accessibility for residents of Sparks throughout northern Nevada. I am the product of Nevada Public Schools. I went from elementary school to middle school, we used to call it junior high school then, to high school, and then through college, all the way through the public school system here in Nevada. Every one of my children have done the same thing, and I'm a, I'm through and through a public education product. I then went to law school at Brigham Young University, and have been practicing law for 25 years, and have my own law practice, and have had that practice for about 20 years. And so I get up in the morning and wonder where my next client's coming from, and are we gonna be able to make payroll? And so I appreciate small business owners and what they go through, and finding customers, and making a payroll, and providing jobs for, for our fellow Nevadans, and I love it. I've got six children and four grandchildren, so my grandchildren now are fifth-generation Nevadans. And I am married to the greatest woman that has ever walked the face of the earth. She puts up with me and puts up with my challenging life, and does it with a smile, and has been a companion and a partner and a sweetheart of mine for over 30 years of marriage, and could not be in love with anybody more than my wife and my family. So, first and foremost, I'm a husband and a father, and then I'm a, a public servant and somebody who loves Nevada.
You know, if I told you to go take a ride in a concrete canoe, you'd probably think I was insulting you. But that's not the case with these University of Nevada students who participate in a competition put on by the American Society of Civil Engineers. Take a look at this.
Engineers are tasked with solving all kinds of problems, but can they make concrete float? Well, you bet. And that's just what engineer students did in the annual American Society of Civil Engineers' Concrete Canoe Races at the beautiful Sparks Marina.
It's amazing, you know, what you can do to get it to float.
Concrete canoe is a year-long competition where we have to do various aspects, like mixed design and construction, and we have to essentially make something that's not supposed to float.
Club teams from 15 area universities recently completed in the Mid-Pacific Conference events, and the overall title went to the University of Nevada. Nevada engineering students will take this year's canoe, nicknamed Zephyr, to the national competition for the 11th straight year. But don't try this at home. Zephyr is the latest product of years of applied engineering and trial and error.
So, it's a lot of extensive testing and different mixes to try and get the right, the right ratio to make the boat actually float in the water.
So, we have a very lightweight concrete. We have a lot of aggregates in it. You know, some teams use foam, other teams use little glass particles, so that that helps keep the weight of the concrete down.
The teams are not allowed to try the canoe out before the competition, so they have to believe the science is right.
We do a really extensive testing on our concrete cylinders to make sure those will float, and then once we come up with a mix, then we actually construct the canoe. And we actually don't bring it out until, this is the first day that the boat's been in the water. So, we don't know if it floats until we get here on race day.
The Sparks Marina hosts many diverse events throughout the year, and the city is always working to bring more exciting and unique events to the one-of-a-kind venue.
The Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility is a joint-owned facility by the cities of Sparks and Reno, and operated by the City of Sparks. Recently, the facility unveiled a new generator that's capable of producing 35% of the plant's energy needs by turning methane gas, a byproduct of the sewer treatment process, into electricity. Take a look.
Sparks residents will save money on energy in the future following the installation of a new cogeneration engine at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility that turns methane gas into electricity that the plant can use.
While we may be two cities, Tom Whorf brings Sparks and Reno together as one to serve the needs of our residents. Tom Whorf is a true representation of local governments working cooperatively together to meet the needs of our residents. So, this is a great facility. It's something that we need to have, you know, we can't function without it. So, it's good to be to celebrate something like we're gonna be the generation which saves us lots and lots of money, and there's more to come.
Built in 1966, the facility processes 28 million gallons of water every day for Sparks, Reno, Sun Valley, and other parts of Washoe County.
About three years ago, we started an energy services project, and we addressed, to address a number of different issues at the plant. Electrical consumption was one, chemical usage was another area we looked at, and one of the things that came forward was we should beneficially reuse the gas that was being produced anyway here at the plant.
The technology here is dated and due for modernization to make the water treatment plant more efficient and environmentally friendly.
So, through a concerted team effort, we've put a lot of work into this facility, and we were able to bring the daily average discharge of treated water in the Truckee River to 408 pounds per day. That's a reduction of almost 25% in the nitrogen that's going back into the river. That's a really big deal. And again, not just because the feds or the state are watching, but because it's good for the river, it's good for the wildlife, it's good for all of us together.
When complete, the $24.9 million project is projected to save taxpayers $1.1 million a year in operating costs. Some of the changes are simple, like swapping out old lights for newer, energy-efficient LEDs for an immediate savings. Other projects are more complex, improvements including replacing aging pipes and pumps.
So, we use that electricity, we're not buying electricity from the grid. It's money into our, not to our pocket, but to the citizen's pocket. It helps defer rate increases, keeps sewer rates lower.
But the biggest change of all is equipping the plant to harvest phosphorus and methane, both natural byproducts of the water treatment process. Phosphorus will be used to make fertilizer. The methane gas will turn turbines used to generate electricity. That energy will in turn be used to run the facility and save the plant from buying all of its power. The methane project is particularly important as electricity makes up 20% of the reclamation plant's operating cost. Previously, both the methane and the phosphorus were released. Now, these byproducts will become a benefit to the facility while also protecting the environment.
One of the most anticipated and beneficial rural projects in the City of Sparks is now underway. The McCarran Pyramid Intersection Project will expand the intersection and enhance safety for the several thousand cars that travel through the intersection every day. Project will take nearly two years, and in the meantime, we ask all our motorists to be patient. Here's how it will impact our residents.
With a simple shovel ceremony, construction began April 2016. Yet the engineering and effort of getting to this day were far from simple. The Regional Transportation Commission and the City of Sparks have worked closely on this project to transform one of the city's busiest intersections into one of the city's best.
This is the intersection of two roadways that are on the national highway system. High-volume roads, roads critical to economic development, roads critical to moving people to jobs, educational opportunities. At the same time, this is a road that's in a very well-established neighborhood, lots of neighborhood services on all corners. We have a church, we have, you know, a neighborhood shopping center across the street, we have poems, you know, people walk, people bike, people do, you know, come out, enjoy the outdoors. And so this project is significant because we're not just looking at the movement of cars, we're looking at the movement of people. We want to keep people safe.
Some 60,000 cars a day travel this corner. Pyramid Way will get one new travel lane in each direction, designed to ease traffic. But it's waiting on the turn lights and really stacked the cars up at Rushell. So now, thanks to this project, both Pyramid and McCarran will soon be striped with dedicated turn-only lanes. The project will add new sidewalks for pedestrians and a paved multi-use path that will parallel Pyramid's eastern side. A series of public meetings gathered public input on the project and led to several design choices. In addition to trees and plants, decorative privacy screens were chosen by the community.
Thank you. That's what it, what it takes, is the neighborhoods, the people, the citizens, to give us their input. It's so hard, many times, to get people just to come forward and tell us what's on their mind.
I think it's gonna be a beautiful project. What I really like is the way the treatment is on the inside of the sound walls for our neighborhoods. I like the idea that we have walkability from our neighborhoods to the shopping over here, and I like the idea that we are now moving people through the area at an easier pace and hopefully safer in the long run.
The intersection improvements will also carry over to the Pyramid and Queen Way. That intersection will be reconfigured, also for improved safety. Drivers should expect delays and road closures during construction, which should be complete in about 24 months.
Well, you know, in 2005, when I ran, I ran on three transportation issues. Vista Boulevard, which has been taken care of, Pyramid McCarran, which we're working on now, and the Southeast Connector, which will be known as Veterans Parkway. All vital transportation routes for people. It'll alleviate traffic, the headache is getting them built. Once they're built, they're gonna love them, and, and of course, we got the bridge too, the bridge over the Truckee River. These are, these are needed, and we went forward and did them, and we did our workshops, and we, we did the reach-out to the folks. It's, this is a big deal for us.
To learn more about the project and sign up for project updates, visit the project's own website, pyramidmccarron.com.
Sparks Mayor Gino Martini recently delivered his annual State of the City address and highlighted a very optimistic 2016 and beyond. There are a lot of things happening in the City of Sparks, and the city has finally begun some recovery from the Great Recession. Here's what the mayor had to say.
Mayor Gino Martini's 11th State of the City Address reflected the optimism of city officials for 2016 and the next decade. Like every city in America, Sparks endured some hard times during the Great Recession. But new optimism, new businesses, and new residential developments show that Sparks is ready for some good times.
This city is preparing for growth. Our planners and engineers are working with the Truckee Meadows Planning Agency, local legislative bodies, business entities, and individuals to ensure that smart growth will carry our city into the future. Sparks is committed to resisting the temptation to grow for growth's sake.
Today, Sparks is looking forward to projected area growth and is preparing for those challenges with new transportation projects like the Pyramid McCarran improvements and the Southeast Connector. Mayor Martini also stressed that even in the worst of economic times, the city still moves forward with vital infrastructure projects, such as the North Truckee Drain, which is a vital component to the regional flood control project, and we continue that work today.
I'm very pleased we have completed the first two phases. Eight years ago, Sparks enacted a fee on its residents and businesses to support a share of the flood project. To date, the city has invested $25 million on the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project, which will direct the drain further downstream into the Truckee River east of Vista Boulevard in Sparks. This critical realignment of the drain will reduce and minimize flooding to the Sparks industrial area.
A lifelong resident of Sparks was happy to provide updates on the revitalization of Victorian Square, where three new highly anticipated projects will provide business opportunities and trendy urban loft-style apartments, as well as new residential development projects, which nearly doubled from 2014 to 2015. Sparks is the city best situated to take advantage of the economic benefits from the Reno-Tahoe Industrial Center, home to Tesla, among other companies relocating to the area.
The huge 107,000-acre, 160-square-mile TRI industrial complex lies a mere nine miles from Sparks. All roads leading from northwestern Nevada to TRI take travelers and commuters through Sparks.
It's a great time to live and work in the City of Sparks.
You know, the Sparks Marina is truly the gem in the City of Sparks, and the city has so much to offer, so many unique venues and destinations for visitors and residents alike. In fact, recently, Nevada Magazine rated the City of Sparks as the most popular city in the entire state of Nevada, all because Councilwoman Julia Ratty had a birthday.
Councilwoman Julia Ratty started it all on a whim.
I happened to be traveling out of the state, and so I needed something to...
I happened to be traveling out of the state, and so I needed something to read in the airport, so I went in and I grabbed a Nevada Magazine, and I got to the article about their contest that they hold to see which town to feature first or feature next. And there was a deadline that was my birthday.
While in the airport, she posted a call to action on her Facebook page. Instead of sending birthday wishes, she asked her social media network to contact Nevada Magazine and place a vote.
And so, I just quickly put it on Facebook and said, "Hey, everybody, if you want to give me a good birthday present this year, please vote for Sparks for the Nevada Magazine tour, and we'll be featured." And people responded, Adam jumped on it as well, and we shut down their server. Everybody was so excited about Sparks and has that great community pride.
The publication's Tour Around Nevada campaign invited the public to vote for their favorite city or town. The public response? The city of Sparks, Nevada received the most votes for favorite city. Nevada Magazine focuses on travel and tourism throughout the state and has been published for 80 years. Publisher Janet Geary attended the mayor's 2016 State of the City Address.
Sparks got a huge, huge response for our March-April edition, and so they were our winner of our March-April edition. We have a really nice story in the magazine about Sparks, and we wanted to honor the mayor today.
The exposure is a great promotion for the city, but it's also something more. The overwhelming response from Sparks citizens says something important.
Well, you know, it just tells people that the people that live in Sparks love living here, they love the community, they're very supportive of the community. And, you know, since we ask all the different cities to participate, and Sparks was just overwhelmingly the winner, it lets, you know, it leaves us to believe that Sparks is very much loved by its community, by its residents.
People who live in Sparks love Sparks. They are not here because they have to be, they're here because they choose to be. And that just really came out in this story.
And that's it for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. You can follow us on Facebook or Twitter, or log on to cityofsparks.us for more news and information. State Senator Debbie Smith represented the city of Sparks since 2000. She was a tireless advocate for issues like education and a true champion for the city of Sparks. Senator Smith passed away earlier this year, and we miss her tremendously. We conclude our program in her honor.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
And coming up next, new leadership for the city, an oral history of the Sparks Information Technologies Department. Governor Sandoval meets with city leaders. Stay tuned for a Spotlight on Sparks. Hi, I'm Adam Mayberry, and welcome to this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. The Sparks City Council's makeup has changed following the 2016 election. Two new city council members look to lead the city into the future. The city council will have a different look going forward and gets a dose of young blood, literally. Millennial Donald Abbott won the Ward 1 seat to replace outgoing Councilwoman Julia Ratty.
I'm looking forward to just doing the best I can for the city, making sure we can continue forward and just be the best city that we can be in the area. Growth is a big one, just the growth and the traffic impacts, and then even their grocery stores being overflooded with so many new people. So, the growth is a big one, as well as just safety, which is, you know, through the entire city, safety is a large concern.
The residents of Ward 5 will have a new councilman for the first time in 16 years. It's Councilman Christopher Dare takes over for former Councilman Ron Schmidt.
It's exciting, I'll tell you. You know, I think it actually culminates everything. The idea that I get to be sitting up there, I get to help make decisions for our city, especially when it comes to some of the policy things, some of the growth we're going to walk through. I'm excited to hopefully fan the flame of growth, of the proper growth we need for our city, but also help just connect our community together. And I think this is where we get, really, the rubber meets the road. We get to come together, hear from our citizens, and I'll tell you, if you're out there and you got something like, we want to hear from you, we want to know what's going on. And I hope, hopefully, we get to represent well. A few things for Ward 5. One, we definitely, we have a lot of development still going to happen in that area, so keeping an eye on that, making sure that happens in a fashion where we communicate. There's always going to be, when we do roads or construction, like we talked about here, there's going to be moments where it's going to impede your driving, but we can communicate well, we can help do our best to make sure that it doesn't affect you too poorly. But then also, we have a lot of empty buildings in Sparks, things that I mean, especially in Ward 5, things that I want to make sure some of our buildings are filled. Right down the road from me, I pass all the time businesses, so I hope to try to find ways to come in and get some businesses in there, so we start seeing the sales tax we want from that, the property tax, but also just, we don't want empty buildings. We want to see new businesses coming in. I'd love to see all kinds of good stuff happen in that area. People's concerns, biggest is growth, traffic, and those things. And Vista definitely, I mean, we're going to find that out there's growing, and every car we add, definitely, we need to be wise with in making sure that we do our best to see that commute from you to go to work and back is not too bad. And so, that's one of the big ones, but I think sometimes it's just information that you don't know, like, when does the roads get fixed? Some of them, I walk around, some of the roads seem like we're needing some help, and there's a schedule, and there's just some of that stuff. As I learn exactly how things function, I can get it out to my ward and to my citizens and say, "Hey, this is what you can expect, this is how it works, this is how it grows."
City Attorney Chet Adams and Ron Schmidt, the mayor pro tempore, were re-elected for year term. It's always an exciting time when new council members are seated by the city, although we're sorry to say goodbye to Julia Ratty and Ron Schmidt. Ratty was elected in 2008 and focused her attention on revitalizing Victorian Square. She will continue to represent the city as a state senator elected to the seat once held by the late Debbie Smith.
And I am incredibly proud. The thing I'm the most proud of is how well we work together as a team. And so, I thank each of you that I had the opportunity to serve with.
Ron Schmidt was one of the longest-serving council members and saw the city through many highs and lows in his 16 years, and was known as a strong proponent of fiscal responsibility.
I've been involved in city government for 16, almost 16 years, and I've only had five other people other than the four out there that I've worked with in those 16 years. That's phenomenal, Governor, that's phenomenal, people doing things right. And I just want to say thank you to all of you, and to all the citizens, the staff, everybody for making this city what it is. I appreciate it. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
The city thanks Ron Schmidt and Julia Ratty for their great service and strong leadership over the years, and welcomes Ward 1's Donald Abbott and Ward 5's Christopher Dare to help lead the city in the coming years. Sparks businesses and residents were prepared for a series of major flood events, thanks to the hard work of Sparks crews and city officials who kept our residents informed. Prior to the early 2017 flood event that caused approximately $15 million in damage to Washoe County, Sparks city officials acted proactively to incorporate lessons learned from preparing for and responding to past flooding events. The city established sandbag stations for businesses and homeowners to protect the properties and kept residents informed with up-to-the-minute information and updates on road closures and potential flood areas. Business owners near the swelling Truckee River prepared for the worst. Eventually, the river did crest, and the industrial areas suffered the worst flooding. While the flooding was fortunately not as bad as feared, these images show the city still suffered from the devastating effects of Mother Nature. And the most important thing is that no lives were lost. Nevada Governor Brian Sandoval praised Sparks officials as he toured some of the worst areas in Washoe County.
In keeping people safe, this is the day where we're going around and surveying and thanking, you know, God for people not, I don't think we've lost any lives during this situation, and I'm very thankful for our first responders, you know, the fire, the police, and everyone else who's been associated with this, the leadership of the Reno City Council, the Spark City Council, Washoe County Commission, everyone who's come together.
The governor recognized the efforts, teamwork, and dedication of city officials who never stopped working to keep residents safe and informed and protect property during the several days of heavy rain.
Governor, this is Ron Corman. He's in charge of our public works functions for the city of Sparks, so all of the preliminary work that was done and all the cleanup work now is all of him and his crew.
Wow. You'd be a busy man.
Yeah.
You've been a busy man.
Been a busy man.
You get enough rest?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we got to force him out of the operations center and off the line because he's out with his guys trying to make sure that they get all this work. So, that's what good leaders do. We're all part of our people.
The city was prepared for the worst, but not everybody got the message. And the recent flooding events highlights the importance of the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project. The third and final phase is about to begin. In December 2016, the Sparks City Council approved the final phase of the North Truckee Drain Project, 12 years in the making.
We'll be doing with Q&amp;A construction and does approximately a half mile of additional box culvert to complete the project.
Following flood events over several decades that plagued the industrial area of Sparks near the Truckee River, the Sparks City Council decided to take matters into its own hands and protect the businesses and residents most vulnerable to flooding. And now, that vision is about to be completely realized.
We did a pretty big feasibility analysis at the start of this project with our consultant HDR Engineering, where we looked at various options. We knew the industrial area was an area that always seems to get the impact from a river flood, and the North Truckee Drain was a key component to why that was happening. And so, we looked at potential solutions there, looked at a ton of different options, involved the public through a working group, things like that, to come up with where we are today.
The $14.1 million final phase will reroute water further downstream, east of Vista Boulevard, to minimize flooding in the industrial area.
If we hadn't done this, it'd just be kind of business as usual. That's one of our first areas that starts to flood in Sparks as the river comes up. We've actually seen it at least three times this winter so far with this record year we're having, so some of those impacts would have been either eliminated or greatly reduced if this project was completed at this time.
And involves some 6,500 feet of piping of various sizes.
They use a slide rail system, so they're able to basically just leapfrog themselves as they go, setting the forms and sliding them along as they go, so they can pour about 40 feet of either floor or top of this box every day.
Some money was provided by the Truckee River Flood Project, but the project has mostly been funded by fees paid by Sparks residents as part of their sewer bills.
The impact during this time is going to be to the businesses in the area that were actually doing the work, having to move things out of the way within easement areas, things like that. So, some impact there, some traffic impacts down, especially in the Clepey Lane area from trucks getting in and out, things like that.
And speaking of the North Truckee Drain realignment, the city project was recently recognized by the Nevada chapter of the American Public Works Association and awarded the 2015 Project of the Year. Our very own Sparks Mayor Gino Martini was recently honored with a very prestigious statewide award. The Nevada League of Cities and municipalities selected Mayor Martini as its 2016 Public Official of the Year.
We asked for nominations from our members, so we get the nominations, and then the former Public Officials of the Year, who are still in office, are the ones who determine who gets the award. So, the award is given by their peers.
I was a little suspicious when my wife said she had been invited to the luncheon by Adam Mayberry. So, I was a little suspicious when she was coming because she likes to have nothing to do with any kind of political dinners or lunches or whatever, so I thought maybe something was up there, and I didn't think about it anymore as the luncheon went on, but it was a big surprise.
In addition to his long and distinguished service to the city of Sparks, the League of Cities cited the mayor's volunteer work throughout the Truckee Meadows community.
It's perfect because honoring him as a public official who's made a real difference in the community that he loves is just, I mean, it's amazing, and it's well-deserved, and he just is the prime example of how a local government should work, passion for what's doing right for your city and for your citizens. So, I'm super excited.
Mayor Martini is also known as one of the most accessible public figures. He's also known for his calm demeanor and down-to-earth style, whether serving on the council, regional boards, or as mayor.
Yeah, I don't think there's any secret. When I first got appointed, I kind of watched some of the other mayors and things, and especially mayors like Tony Armstrong, Bob Kuchel, you know, kind of watched what they would do in certain situations. You know, I always noticed that they never got overwhelmed or ran off at the mouth or jumped up and down and screaming at people. They would take things very calmly, you know, if there was a bad situation, you'd mull it over, and you want to make sure you get both sides of the story before you start pointing fingers or blaming people. So, it's just a matter of being calm, talking to people, and, you know, most of the time, council people are very, very good people, especially our council. They get it, they understand, and they'll do the right thing.
The mayor has left his mark in other ways, too.
And I love, I love his sense of humor and the fact that he just, he's so grounded, so intense situations of things coming before the council, his humor and his laid-back, grounded way of dealing with things just cuts through all the stress and all of the, you know, people getting all upset about things. He grounds, he just brings it down to a different level.
The Nevada League of Cities advocates on behalf of local governments, giving them a unified voice at the state government level.
Our mission is to be an extra set of eyes, ears, and voice for the cities. You know, we provide training for the elected and appointed officials. We also advocate on their behalf with both the federal government, the state government, and also the state legislature.
Congratulations to Mayor Gino Martini, the 2016 Public Official of the Year. No city division is relied upon more from other city departments or city employees than the IT or Information Technology Division. There's perhaps no job description that has changed more over the course of 30 years than for these members of this critical department in the city. New technology has made a city more efficient and personal information more secure over the years, but in order to use all that technology, it has to be implemented and integrated and migrated and maintained. Meet Steve Davidex, Sparks Information Technology Manager.
I was hired in 1984 as a computer operator for the city of Sparks. Back then, we did backups on tape, and I printed out all the forms, including signing checks and everything, all down here, everything was printed in the computer room. We did everything from printing... We did everything from printing paychecks to accounts payable to time cards to every report that anybody needed because nothing was online. It was all, you did some work online, but most everything was printed out.
Steve has been with the city for more than 30 years and has seen the city go from a single server to an army of servers today connected to hundreds of PCs, tablets, and phones.
We had a HP 3000 Series 3 Mini Computer. It was one computer, one computer in general, and it had 21 terminals attached to it. And what you would, a terminal was just like a connection to it without, not like a PC, but you could just type and it would talk to it back and forth, one character at a time. It was fast, but you know, that's all we did. We backed up every day. That's what I spent my evenings doing here for many years, and that's what I did. That's how everything was. We bought one or two for a while there, then we bought 12, and every department got one. And then, oh, this person needs one, and then they thought, well, let's make sure all the office assistants and all that, they had one. And then we, oh man, I don't even, it just kind of grew to where everybody needs a computer. We have to have computers now. We can't do our jobs. When we're not working, when somebody's computer isn't working, they can't do their jobs today.
The way data and information is stored and accessed over the years has changed every few years.
Okay, so when I started working at the city, we had four disk drives that held four disk packs that held 120 megabytes of data each, and that held everything for the city, everything from payroll to sewer billing to business licensing, dog licenses, et cetera. This is what we used to back everything up on, on the city. A daily backup took about six of these, and a full took about 15 of these back in 1984. We started backing up to this in 1987, 88, and we were able to, instead of staying at work, we could put two of these into a draw, two different drives and back up everything to two of these overnight, instead of working for a full, which is to take from around 6:00 at night till a little after midnight on the big tapes, to this, which changed it to we could leave. This is a 5 and 1/4 inch floppy from, I don't know when now, 80, 94 maybe, that's Microsoft This is from around 2000, this is an 80 gigabyte disk drive, and this actually was from an old PC that had Windows XP on it, which the city doesn't use anymore because it's not as secure. So that was 120, or 80 gigabytes, which is 80,000 of those. We back stuff up because if you, if something happened, which did happen, you know, if you lost data, if you had a disk drive fail, you had to be able to restore it, and that's what we still do today. In fact, today, we back up to disk drives, and then we back up to these, but this holds 800 gigabytes just on this tape alone. And we back up all the time, all the data for the city to this kind of tape today.
And now we have approximately about 70 servers in the city that run all the major programs that we do. So IT today is nine full-time employees in the Information Technology Division, and I have two support technicians, one system administrator, one network admin, and then we have a development staff that takes care of all the systems that do the day-to-day programming that make the city work, everything from our financial system to the sewer billing to building permits, et cetera, and that's what they do. There's four of them. The changes, well, when I started here, we had one computer and 21 terminals, like I said, and they were connected all here in City Hall. We did have one terminal at the police department and a couple of oddball terminals at the court. That was it. And my job was that, like I said, back then was backups and everything, and sometimes I have to figure out why things weren't, they couldn't type. Today, our, the biggest changes we have today is everybody has a PC of some kind, and not just a PC, they also have smartphones, they have tablets, and we have to make all this work. We've spent the last couple of years building the network infrastructure here at City Hall so that we are a true mobile workforce. Our day is made up of a lot of different problem-solving issues. It's a lot of problem solving for the whole city. We make sure that an employee is able to do their job. So when an employee clicks on an icon on their PC, they get what they're supposed to get so they can do their job. Well, what's happened over the years is it started out, we would type, we did, we had key punch operators, and they would type stuff in because nobody had terminals. And over time now, everybody does a lot of their own data entry. The systems track all that stuff electronically, but we've also scanned in old documents and new documents. We have every building permit, building plan, et cetera, has all been scanned in over the last 10 to 15 years so that everything's pretty well digital, so that we can try to get rid of some of the paper because paper takes up space. We consider ourselves the ultimate service point for the city. Without, what my staff does and the IT staff in the city, what we do is we try to bring, make sure everybody can do their job. We're definitely a service part of the city. We're not a out in the front in the public. We, that's not our job. Our job is to make sure that those people can do their job. Here at the city, I believe we have probably some of the most secure systems we can.
So these are actual servers, everything from our full-size servers to our actual virtualized servers that manage all the other servers. So this is everything from desktops, virtual desktops, servers, our GIS system is on here. This is how we interconnect the whole city into the city of Sparks, the rest of the city. Gigabit connections to every desktop, it's 10 gigabyte in the data center. Then we have 48 tapes at any time, or in the cabinet, 48 of them, and it takes a little robot arm and puts them in the disk drive or the tape drives to back it up. Yeah, it's, it's got a robot arm that pulls the tapes in and puts them into the disk tape, the tape drive, and then when they're full, it pulls them out. Our data center running for about an hour if we were to lose power to the city and our generator didn't take on. So that's what this case, these two cases here are, is battery backup.
While some things change, some things never change.
I still think, even with all the technology we have today, the best way to get, figure out what's going on is to talk to somebody face-to-face or solve a problem face-to-face. If, when, that's really probably the most important thing that I think my staff and I do is making sure that we provide face-to-face service of it all possible.
The Nevada Veterans Memorial Project, spearheaded by Sparks Councilman Ron Smith, is well underway after a very successful kickoff campaign. Take a look.
When they go out and put their life on the line and they come back or they don't come back for one reason or another, they should be honored. They're all heroes to me, everybody that's been in the service. And so the only way I could think of doing it was to build something, not a shrine, not for the families, but for the vets themselves.
The project is funded entirely by donations and will be located near Sparks Boulevard as part of the Southeast Connector, which is expected to be completed by the RTC in late 2017. We thought we'd give you a look at what the project is expected to look like. If you wish to donate, please go to nevadaveteransmemorial.org. And that's all for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. We appreciate you watching. As for me, this is the final program that I'll be hosting. It's been a privilege and an honor serving the citizens of Sparks, and I appreciate you tuning in. From all of us at the city of Sparks, thank you. Hello and welcome to Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry. I want to start this show with a question to you, our viewers. Have you done all you can to protect your family from fire? Can you calculate how much defensible space you need around your home? Do you have an evacuation plan? Would you know how to rebuild? Would you know how to recover? If you've answered no to any of these questions, you can learn some answers on this Spotlight on Sparks. Who could forget the Colin Ranch Fire on November 19, 2011? The blaze burned across our TV screens and our hearts. Before it was contained, it would cover 2,000 acres and claim 29 homes. Still raw, residents found themselves watching and worried just two months later. The Washto Dry Fire flared to life in January of 2012. This time, some 2,000 people faced evacuation orders as hundreds of firefighters fought to save lives and property. Each of these fires is a warning, a wake-up call. Next time, it could be any one of us. That's why the Sparks Fire Department wants to make sure you know what you need to know about living with fire.
No agency can handle some of these large-scale emergencies by themselves. They have to be very dependent upon their neighbors and friends, if you will. Other jurisdictional fire departments, a lot of times, were very reliant upon health services, animal control services, law enforcement, and many, many other agencies to manage these large-scale events.
In fact, there's a longstanding system of mutual aid in place among fire agencies. Generally, a call for help goes first to the neighboring fire department. If the emergency is a disaster, the call for help escalates up through regional and state government, and for the worst events of all, all the way up to the federal level.
What we would do if we had a large-scale incident here, a fire incident, if you will, we would call on our local partners throughout the region as well as throughout the state, also some federal resources. We would call the Bureau of Land Management. We've got two agreements that are key to some of these large-scale incidents, the Nevada Master Mutual Aid Agreement whereby we would contact DEM, and they would acquire a lot of resources through that agreement to come provide us assistance, as well as the Lake Tahoe Regional Fire Chiefs Association Agreement whereby we would be able to acquire a number of the apartment, partners on both the Nevada and the California side of Lake Tahoe.
The danger that's top of mind for many is wild brush fires.
Yeah, the biggest thing, if we're talking wildland urban interface and especially in the hillsides east of the city of Sparks, would be to ensure that you've got a defensible space. Living with fire is an excellent program. Go online, find Living with Fire, and it will tell you about what an appropriate defensible space is for your house and some of those preventative measures that you can take to prepare yourself for a wildland fire. Also be prepared to evacuate. Make sure that you've got your medications in a place where you can easily gather those and take those with you. Those personal belongings that are near and dear to you, whether it's photographs, nowadays they're hard drives with digital photography on them. Also pets, animals, and any belongings that maybe have been passed down to you that are cherished, those family memorabilia type of items. So my recommendation would be go to Living with Fire, look at that website, and there's a lot of great, great resources there.
Some of the more common fires everywhere are cooking fires, but...
Believe it or not, we've got a lot of fires that are started by juveniles. Talk to your kids, talk to them about the importance of fire and the damage that fire can do. We really, really are seeing an increase in juvenile fire centers in our community. The other thing I also want to, want to talk about is Project Safe. We've got a program that for free will put smoke detectors in your house. Number one cause of fire deaths is smoke inhalation, not the fire itself. You want to make sure you've got working smoke detectors in your home, which, which, which once again leads me to really throw a shout-out, if you will, to the people that I've got in the city of Sparks Fire Department. Our fire prevention staff is doing a great job of firing grants whereby we can put smoke detectors in homes.
Sparks firefighters have to be trained and ready to respond at all times, no matter what the call for help or where.
For us, when somebody calls, we're going to go help. I contact our city manager, let him know that we've got a significant event outside our jurisdiction, and then what we do is we start mobilizing those resources and send do is we start mobilizing those resources and send people to help. We've been all over the country. We helped during Hurricane Katrina down in New Orleans. We've gone to California many, many, many times. We've also helped our neighboring jurisdictions here as well: Lyon County, Carson City, City of Reno, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, as well as a lot of the federal partners on the federal lands here in the state of Nevada. Fighting fire is everyone's concern. We urge you to visit livingwithfire.com. In any disaster event, your goal is to be self-sufficient. That's without electricity, running water, or gas for a full 72 hours. Is your family ready? Once again, that website is livingwithfire.info. Knowing what to do in an emergency is important, not just for you, but also for your fire department's first responders. Training is the key to quick reflexes and fast response time, so our city fire department practices difficult drills routinely. Sparks recently hosted regional fire crews in a hazmat drill. The scenario consisted of a special event in Victorian Square when a drug lab is discovered in a hotel room at the Silver Club.
And this is the closest to the real world that we can get, and it's important to be able to have the guys look at things differently, from not a fixed facility, not a predictable type of environment. This actually puts all the single-step tools together to go into an unknown situation, mimicking an active hotel, and go in and actually have a hazardous materials incident, and not only have to go in and identify what the problem is, but perform some rescues. Today is a situation that we have Saturday at the Rib Cook-Off. Obviously, it's August or the 1st of September, Labor Day weekend, so all of downtown area is very populated. We have a special event. We have a lot of vendors, and this is a big economic draw for the City of Sparks. The scenario is that we have a fully occupied hotel structure, and some of the residents inside the hotel start complaining of nausea, vomiting, shortness of breath, burning sensation when they breathe, burning in their eyes and in their nose and throat. So, most of them self-evacuated. The staff of the hotel tried to evacuate everybody, but got to the point where the burning sensation was too much, so they think they got everybody out. The scenario that we have set up is that our first engine company gets on scene and touches bases with the manager, and they realize that this is way beyond what just us as an engine company or a fire department can handle. So, they ramp up the hazmat team to a Level 2 hazmat, get all resources in the valley responding, so we can come and actually figure out what the problem is. The first-in crew comes in. They get some intelligence or get some feed that there's somebody inside that is calling them on a cellphone, that has been overcome by the sensation of the burning and unable to breathe, and he's still talking on his cellphone, but he can't mobileate or move to the outside of the building. So, we have to do a rapid rescue on the front side. So, we go in and do a rescue, and then go ahead and come out. Then we simulate that we have a chemical lab set up inside. So, now, we need to go in and do not only figuring out what the problem is, but what the problem is. There's various different steps to do that, and different levels of chemical clothing that we use. The first steps are done in just regular fire clothing, turnouts, and a breathing apparatus or SCBA, so that they're not breathing any of the bad chemicals. The majority of the hazardous materials incidents that we go on can be dealt with in such a manner. But there are a few chemicals that will really affect and go right through the system. And that's when we have to use a fully encapsulated vapor-protective Level A suit. It's extremely important that we train together with the City of Reno. We do it at least once a month, and that cooperative effort in a small valley or county, it's Washoe County, we need to try to share those resources. And we've been sharing those resources on the hazmat team for many years. The training is imperative that we get that common line of communication, that comfort level with people that we only see once or twice a month. When we get called to respond as a hazmat team, that's not the time to shake hands and get to know one another. That's the time that the problem needs to be solved.
More than a decade ago, in 1999, the citizens of Sparks voted Mike Carrigan into office. Councilman Carrigan is currently serving his fourth term. So, it should be no surprise to voters that Mr. Carrigan is now the city's longest-serving councilman. I recently met up with the councilman at Golden Eagle Regional Park in Ward 4 to reminisce about the past and ask about his vision for our city's future. Councilman Carrigan, tell us how you became involved with Sparks politics.
Well, I had retired out of the Navy, and I was living in Sparks. We decided to stay in Sparks, and the city councilwoman that was Ward 4 representative decided not to run again. So, I was complaining at the dinner table. I said to my wife, "You know, I hope somebody good decides to run for office," and she got tired of hearing me complaining, and she said, "Well, why don't you run?" It was a 1999 election. There were something like seven people in the primary. I was the longest shot of all, I think, of everybody, because nobody had ever heard of me, and I ended up winning the election by 40 votes or something like that.
Well, you're currently the most seasoned city council member on the council.
That's a nice way of putting it, yeah.
You've been there longer than anybody.
I feel like I'm a good stake or something, you know?
Well, how have you seen the city change over the last decade?
Well, yeah, when I first got on the council, I think we had 37,000 people living in Sparks, and now we have over 90. So, you know, I mean, almost three times as many people live in here as when I first became a city councilman. So, we've grown a lot. I think the biggest change I've seen, and this is something that the city council should be proud of, you know, we've, up until, you know, recently, we were always considered kind of the bedroom community of Reno. We've always lived in the shadow of Reno, where people lived in Sparks, and then we had to go to work in Reno, go shopping in Reno, do our entertaining in Reno. And I think we've overcome that. I think now we have places we can shop here. We have places you can go to work, and also places that, you know, you can go for entertainment. So, I think that was the biggest obstacle, and I think we've overcome it.
Was that something that was discussed at the city council level in terms of how do we want this city to grow, and what do we want to...
Yeah, I think we've always talked about, you know, having the city have its own identity and come out of that umbrella from Reno, but also, the biggest thing that the people always say is they want to maintain that small city atmosphere. So, it was kind of a difficult thing to grow, but still maintain that small-town atmosphere. And I think we've done it pretty well.
In fact, we're sitting here at the Golden Eagle Regional Park, which is in your ward.
It is.
And this wasn't here when you were elected. This was just...
This was empty land, and I think there was one, Ira Hansen had a little farm right over there, as a matter of fact, and that is it. There was a dirt road up here. It was all BLM land, yeah.
So, this is a feather in your cast, probably a pretty proud accomplishment.
Well, you know, I think the city council should be really proud of this, because we did this without any taxpayer money. You know, we swapped some land with the BLM. In other words, we applied for this land. The BLM gave us this land, and then we had money that, when you build a house, some of that money is set aside for parks. So, we had that money in the bank, and we sold Don Mello and took that money with the money from our Parks and Rec Fund and built this thing without any bonds or without any help from the public as far as taxes go. So, we should be really proud of that.
Let me switch gears. You have served on a lot of boards and commissions that require public officials to set policy direction. What are some of those boards and commissions, and what do you think are some of the more important activities that you've been involved with?
You know, I have the luxury, I guess, to say that I sit on the regional board, so I get to interact with Washoe County commissioners and the City of Reno council people. And I think one of the most important things we ever did is buy a water company from Nevada. At that time, it was, well, Nevada Energy. So, we bought it from Nevada Energy and turned it into Truckee Meadows Water Authority. I think that was probably the biggest accomplishment of any regional board I've sat on.
You've contributed a lot to the city. What is it that makes you want to continue to serve the citizens of Sparks? I mean, what is it that really makes you tick, if you will?
You know, when you think about that question, some families are, you know, they're, I guess the tradition is to be a firefighter. Some are policemen. Some are engineers. I guess the Carrigan family, we've always been public servants. You know, I've been on the city council before that. I was in the military. My wife Cora is a schoolteacher. My oldest daughter Ashley is the state director for Senator Dean Heller, so she runs the state office. And then my youngest daughter is an officer in the United States Navy. So, I guess it's just in our family to serve the public. It's very satisfying to do that.
What do you think will be, is in your future, and I'm not asking to make any bold announcements...
You want me to announce what I want to do next?
But, because we'll be running this program for many months to come, but what is it that comes to your mind? Because term limits is going to take a toll on you here in a couple of years, as we're talking, a little bit more than a couple of years. And so, you want to continue to serve in public service? You want to retire? What comes to your mind? Or is it just simply too early? Talk about that.
Well, no, I don't think it's too early. I think that the public will let me know. You know, they're my bosses, and if something comes up in the next, you know, I have two and a half more years on the city council, and if something comes up in two and a half years, and somebody gives me a call and says, "Hey, we really want you to do this," I'll probably look at it. I mean, retirement is, you know, I retired out of the military and found myself at home by myself, so that wasn't a whole lot of fun. You know, my wife is still a schoolteacher. I don't know if she'll ever quit being a schoolteacher because she loves it so much. And I really enjoy serving the public. So, I think what'll happen in these two and a half years is that somebody will come up to me, and if they want me to, you know, run for something else, they'll say, "Hey," you know, it could be the Assembly. It could be the State Senate. It could be mayor. I mean, I don't know what comes up. If somebody wants me to do it, I'll take a look at it.
If you were to hang your hat on two or three real key items, since you've been on the city council, that you're proud of the most, what would those be?
There's things we do every day that, you know, people don't realize. You know, it's like, "Oh, we widen Vista the Four Lanes." I mean, that sounds really trite, but people out here that live out here thought that was the greatest thing, and it took nine years. I mean, that's how slow the wheels of government work, but it took nine years of me really chipping in people's ears to go, "Hey, we need that widen out there." And finally, after nine years of talking to the RTC, we finally got it done. This is a great facility out here. So, I mean, buying the water company, I think, was the best thing that we've ever done, because now our fate's in our own hands, and the citizens and the owners of that, we're all owners of the water company, and we're calling our own shots. And to me, what really sells this town are the people that live here. You know, and everybody that I've talked to that lives in Sparks really likes it here, and they wouldn't live anywhere else. Now, some of them work in Reno, but they'll live in Sparks. And there are so many, believe it or not, we have a lot of Reno firefighters and Reno police officers that live in Sparks and work in Reno. So, that's telling you something, that they feel really safe here, and they like it here, so.
Well said. I appreciate your time, councilman.
No problem. Anytime.
How big a deal is a pothole? Well, it all depends on the pothole. Some may not be too noticeable. Well, if you've ever encountered a bump in the road that really bugged you, then you will appreciate the City of Sparks Road Crews paving the way to smoother surfaces and calmer commutes. It's a daunting task. There are only six employees to take care of 600 lane miles of Sparks roadways. You may have noticed ongoing roadwork throughout Sparks neighborhoods.
Yeah, there are three categories of pavements that we prioritize. They are for preventative maintenance, corrective maintenance, and rehabilitation. And the PCI values for those three categories range from 100 to 70 for preventative maintenance, 69 to 40 for corrective maintenance, and below 40 is rehabilitation.
John Erickson, the city's transportation manager, explains the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI.
What the City of Sparks does is go throughout the city and inventory the Pavement Condition Index, which is a PCI. That PCI ranges from 0 to 100, 0 basically being a dirt road, with 100 being a brand-new road, which is exhibited here on Richard's Way, which was just completed.
For example, what's down the road for Richard's Way? How long will a repair like this last?
Approximately 30 to 40 years. And so, that's not to say that we wouldn't do maintenance on that roadway. This road will receive a slurry seal in about 10 years. About the 20-year timeframe, we would do some corrective measures, some deep patching, and come back and re-slurry the roadway. During the course of the year, we would crack-seal the road to make sure that all the cracks are filled up, so that water doesn't infiltrate and degrade the pavement. We have a real high freeze-thaw situation here at the city, or within the region, I should say. And basically, what the freeze-thaw is, is that we get water in the pavement. It thaws out during the winter and then freezes at night, and so we have a lot of freeze-thaw here within the region.
Local contractors handle the heaviest repair work. The city's pavement management program inventories assign a PCI rank and prioritizes roadway repairs.
Based on the PCI and funding available, we take that priority of projects to city council for review each year and get a budget authority approved.
Getting through city council budget is just job one in planning projects.
There is quite a bit of coordination. We coordinate with our sewer and utility division to make sure that if there is a sewer or storm brain line that needs to be rehabilitated, we coordinate the street project with the utility project, as well as Tom Wa and Indy Energy. If they have a facility that needs to be rehabilitated, we'll coordinate the street project with those facilities. The recently completed projects is obviously Richard's Way is where we're here today, Third and Quail, P Street, and Dever. Were just recently completed.
So, where's next on the pavement priority list? Do you own commercial property in Sparks? You want to sell it? Maybe clean it up a bit first. Well, if so, then you need to know about new federal funding that may be able to help you. To find out if you qualify, contact the City of Sparks and ask about the Brownfields Program. Now, here's how it works.
We have a drill rig here today, and we are taking soil and groundwater samples, and we will take those samples to the lab to verify that there either is contamination or there's not contamination. We are looking for petroleum and hazardous materials. The property owner, this is a program at no cost at all to the property owner. We received a grant from the EPA to help and assist property owners to get Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessments done on their property.
The properties are generally located in the redevelopment district. They're properties that have had past use. These properties are generally things like old service stations, properties that have had heating oil, underground heating oil tanks, properties that maybe have been used for light industrial use.
We are going to hopefully start seeing some redevelopment because of this grant, especially in this economy. Any development is exciting, but one of the first steps is you're going to have to find out if your property's been contaminated or not. A Phase 1 is a paper, basically a paper research of the history of what's happened on this property, so identifies if there's any potential contamination on it. If there is any potential, then we go into a Phase 2. And we have, in this grant, we have money to do Phase 1s and Phase 2s. We've surveyed 22 properties so far, and nine of them have been found to have no contamination on them, so they're cleared to go for redevelopment, so that's good news. And then nine of them we're looking at right now doing Phase 2s.
That's exactly what's going on behind us. We have chosen these sites based on their location and the owner's interest in redevelopment. So, now what we're trying to do is we're either trying to verify that there is contamination or verify that the sites are not contaminated.
Anybody who's going to be looking at redeveloping or selling their property, the banks most likely are going to require that you have a Phase 1, because they don't want to take on the risk of giving you a loan and then finding that there's major contamination. A Phase 1 typically costs about $5,000, so it's saving the property owner about $5,000. And then if we have to do a Phase 2, generally, they run about $15,000. So, a total, that would be $20,000 benefit to the property owner.
The laboratory will take the samples, and they will analyze them. They will be returned to us. We do a final report for the city.
If you're a property owner, please give me a call. I'd be glad to talk to you, and maybe we can assist you. You can reach me at 353-7878.
When most of us think about a fire department, we think of the men and women riding on the big red trucks. But there's a lot more to running a fire department than just operations. There's actually four departments in the Sparks Fire Department: operations, administration, prevention, and training. The man in charge of keeping all of Sparks Fire running is Sparks Fire Department Chief Andy Flock. Our Spotlight on Sparks cameras caught the chief on the job and asked him about his years of service and his goals. This picture is the first motorized fire apparatus purchased by the Sparks Fire Department in 1917. It boasts a 300-gallon-per-minute pumper chemical truck with a whopping 75 horsepower. Today's pumper trucks are a far cry from those early days, early days that are reflected on the faces of the fire chiefs. Fire chiefs in the City of Sparks have all come from inside the organization. There's a wonderful photo, or it's actually a portrait or picture, if you will, in our lobby at Fire Station 1.
lobby at Fire Station One, and it's representative of over 60 years of fire chiefs. And all of them have come through the ranks and have had the fortunate opportunity to become fire chief within this excellent organization.
Andy Flock had no idea his photo would one day fill the spot labeled 10th Fire Chief.
You know, having grown up in this area, I moved to the city of Reno when I was eight years old, went to Jesse Beck Elementary, went to the old BD Bellinghurst High School, went to Ooster High School, of course, went on to college here. I've been vested in this community for the majority, if not all, of my life.
Some 92,000 people live within the 38 square miles that make up the Sparks city limits. About a dozen fire stations answer an average of 25 emergency calls each day. So, how did Fire Chief Flock find himself at the top of this organization?
I had an indoor job. I used to work at Washoe Medical Center, which is now Renoun Medical Center. I lived in a house very close to the city garage and I happened to see a lot of fire engines going by. I had a desire to work outside, outdoors again. And so, I started talking to some of the firefighters and it appealed to me, so I went back to school, got my degree, tested for fire departments, and was fortunate to get hired as a volunteer in 1983 with the City of Sparks. In 1984, I was fortunate enough to get hired full-time and I moved up through the ranks and became fire chief.
The department's mission is providing the highest level of fire prevention, fire suppression, rescue, emergency medical care, and related services to the citizens, as well as businesses and visitors of the City of Sparks. Chief Flock's job is maximizing safety resources in a world of smaller budgets for public safety.
A lot of what I do, we are trying to continue to maintain at the current staffing levels that we have, as well as continue to provide excellent equipment for our personnel to use. In difficult times, obviously, we've had to cut budgets on both the personnel side and the equipment side. This piece of apparatus behind me, this regional, this hazardous materials vehicle, was actually acquired through a grant. I've got a staff of 90 people. We used to have 117. Due to economic downturn, we're down to 90 people. 87 of those are sworn people, includes my fire suppression staff, as well as my fire prevention officer. As we've seen a loss of personnel within our organization, these guys have stepped up and taken on more, and they continue to do more and more and more. And I'm very proud of the people within Sparks Fire Department, and I want you to know that these are, these are some quality people in our organization.
Chief Flock is the first to point out that great service comes from a great staff, no matter the size.
We decided to reduce the staffing levels on all our fire apparatus from four personnel to three. And what that did, that allowed us to keep our stations open. Every station is staffed. And what we want to do is we want to provide service to all the incidents that we go on. And a rapid response is really key to a lot of those incidents, getting there fast to change an outcome. What I like to tell people is, "How long can you hold your breath?" We try to get there as quickly as we can, provide those interventions that's going to save a life.
If history repeats itself at Sparks, then one day, one of these firefighters will climb the ranks and fill the 11th spot on the wall in the Hall of Fire Chiefs. We close this installment of Spotlight on Sparks with the mayor and city council honoring U.S. Olympian Jake Dalton. Jake was one of the five members of the U.S. Men's Gymnastics Team at the London Olympics. Jake, who was from Sparks, represented his nation with grace and dignity. We are proud of our hometown hero.
Well, we're just about out of time, and that does it for another installment of Spotlight on Sparks. It's happening here. We hope you enjoyed meeting some of the city staff working for you, and we urge you to visit livingwithfire.info because the information there saves lives and because it takes a community to survive a wildfire. Please be safe. I'm Adam Mayberry.
Rescue work is very dangerous for first responders. Often, it puts their lives at risk to save yours. So, Sparks firefighters train to keep rescue skills sharp.
Hello and welcome to Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry. In the next half hour, we'll take you behind the scenes in Ward One, and we'll take you on the scene of job number one, and that's public safety.
This emergency exercise drill feels very real from the bottom of a 10-foot-deep, dirty ditch.
This is, this is one of the disciplines that our technical rescue team takes part in, is trench rescue. We also do structural collapse rescue, high-angle rescue, low-angle rescue, and confined space rescue.
The first challenge for Sparks Fire Department's technical rescue team is how to work the site without making things any worse.
Yes, and we, what we do is we build shoring that's going to keep the walls from collapsing in, and we do that from the top down. So, as we go into the trench, we're pressurizing against the side of the trench until we can get down to the victim, get our people on the ground, and actually dig in the personnel.
Listen as the instructor talks about stabilizing the trench sidewalks.
Check from, that's going to be important. So, where can I find four-by-fours? What else can I use?
Shoring and stabilizing walls is just half the job. There's still an endangered citizen to rescue.
About 60% of trenches that have had a collapse in them will have another collapse. So, if we, if we just throw a ladder in there and rush in to rescue somebody, then we're taking the chance of everybody not going home, and that's not what we want to do. So, we need to do it safely and make sure that we get the people out as expeditiously as we can.
Sparks Fire wasn't the only local agency to benefit from the day's training. The Sparks Community Services Department and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District also participated in the advanced training event.
We have not had a trench class in several years due to budget constraints, but we're able to put some money aside and get one on this year. We've got several members of the technical rescue team who have not been through a trench class, so it's fairly imperative.
A former member of the technical response team is moving on to new challenges. Tom Garrison has had a long and varied career with the city's fire department and is now the new fire chief for the City of Sparks.
I've been with the Sparks Fire Department for 26 years. I got hired in July of 1987. I've been in the Truckee Meadows all my life. I moved here in 1961, and I lived on Moana Lane, which at that time was the edge of town. Okay, so I've seen this town, you know, grow up from very, very small beginnings to the size of this today. I went to school here. I went to school at Anderson Elementary, and then I moved out to the North Valleys and went to Lemon Valley Elementary, Trainer Junior High School, called it Junior High School then, Hug High School, and then I went to UNR and graduated with a degree in education, elementary education, as well as secondary education. Started teaching and coaching. I taught in Ferley High School, and then I ended up being a head basketball coach at Monogue High School for a year and decided to leave teaching and didn't know what my next move was going to be. It was, it was probably an easy transition. It's very, very similar, even though when you're coaching, you lose games. You know, when you, when you lose games in the fire service, it's a lot more serious. Okay? I was out of education and kind of bouncing around jobs and not really knowing what I was going to do with my future. And I was sitting at the intersection right over here at Rock and Victorian, and a fire truck drove by. And the person driving the fire truck was a guy I used to compete against in high school. And I thought, "Gary's driving a fire truck. That looks so exciting." And I thought, "Maybe I'll give that a try." And a little while later, they had an application process, and I applied and took the test and, you know, I guess it was meant to be. Well, I started when I was 30 years old, so I was relatively old for a rookie firefighter. Very intimidated, very nervous about what I was going to be doing. Well, when I, when I started, I was hired with a group of 12, which at that time was the largest single hiring in the history of the Sparks Fire Department. And I was hired because they were opening Fire Station Three on East Greg Street. So, at that time, there were, there were two fire stations in the City of Sparks, this station here on Victorian and the one on Berry. There were, I think, three fire engines with three persons on each fire engine and one truck company with two people. So, really, we almost, not quite doubled, but almost a third more people were, we expanded the staffing by almost a third just with our hiring. I spent seven years as a firefighter and then got promoted to an operator. I spent a year doing that, which actually was the most fun job in the fire department. Driving the fire trucks is just a blast. But then, a year later, promoted to captain, and I spent 12 years as a captain before deciding to change direction a little bit and go into training. Spent a couple of years in training and then promoted to a division chief. Spent four years as a division chief, and then this job came open, and I think I enjoy the challenge. Every day is different. There's no real rulebook for leadership positions. There's no procedure manual. It's more common sense, doing what's right, treating people how you would want to be treated. I can remember when the edge of town was, you know, Reed High School. And, you know, none of the north, north, you know, Wingfield Springs or, you know, Los Altos area, none of that was there. So, I remember when that was developed and think, "Wow, this is, this is really going to stretch us." And, you know, we've grown and tried to keep pace with the needs and the risks in the community. As new areas developed, we worked with developers to get fire stations built. As soon as so many houses were built, you know, they had a requirement to build fire stations, and then we had the challenge to staff them. And at that time, the city was experiencing, you know, just this great acceleration of growth and within the city, and budgets were good, and we were able to staff and buy fire trucks and build fire stations. Our staffing level five years ago, 2008, we had four persons per staffing across the board, and we have since reduced to three-person staffing across the board. That was a decision made by the city and fire department staff to make sure that we could still provide service to 95% of our call volume. We really believe that getting there fast, even with less numbers, is more effective than not having, closing down a fire station. My vision is to make sure that the fire department is designed to meet the needs of the community and also the risk of the community. Right now, probably my biggest challenge is making sure that not only is, do I have staffing to meet our most common or frequent call volume, which are EMS calls, which only need, you know, one engine company, but on the other end of the extreme, I have to meet those structure fires that need, you know, 15 or more people. Okay? So, there's always a challenge to try to design a staffing model that covers both extremes. We have, we have active mutual aid agreements with both Truckee Meadows and Reno and active automatic aid agreements. There are areas in our city that, that we need assistance, and we have areas in our city that are county pockets, and they need our assistance, so it's mutually beneficial. I think that, you know, we've done a great job for the community. We, we promise that we'll be there within six minutes, and 70% of the time, we meet that promise. We've never let people down. When they call us for help, we show up, and we show up quickly. We show up with skilled personnel. We show up with great equipment, and we show up with compassion and caring for, you know, taking care of the citizens.
Christmas time has always been special in the City of Sparks. In 2013, the city received its final Christmas tree from its sister city, Garibaldi, Oregon. In 2014 and beyond, the city and its residents will experience a new live tree that'll stand on Victorian Square for generations to come.
The Christmas tree traveled almost 600 miles from Sparks' sister city in Garibaldi, Oregon. It's a gift from their city to our city.
Me and Dave Stein, Sr., goes out and looks for a tree for a day or two before, a week or two before, and we probably look at thousands of trees before we find one that's full enough all the way around and straight.
Sister cities between Garibaldi and the City of Sparks have started some, close to 30 years ago. It actually started with the city of Reno as a lot of good things. It started in a conversation in a bar with between a couple of people, and the next thing you know, there was, the city of Reno had a tree being delivered the following week to support Christmas, and the following year, the city of Garibaldi set two Christmas trees, one for Sparks, one for Reno. And Reno decided not to carry on their relationship with the City of Sparks. It's been going on for close to 30 years. And the city has taken and sends a couple of people on up for their festival once a year, and then they try to send as many people as they can down for hometown Christmas parade and spend three or four days in the City of Sparks and kind of exchange of ideas and things, and increase tourism.
Yeah, I think it's sad, you know, after 28 years, but like I said, you know, if they feel it's ran its course, and I think the participation, you know, each year's got a little bit less.
Trying to get people from the Oregon coast, all of the other Oregon coast, to come and spend a weekend in the City of Sparks, it's a big deal. And it's worked for a long time.
Many of the tree's handmade decorations were created by children participating in the City of Sparks youth programs.
Now it's time to spotlight our Sparks City Councilmember. So, join me for a conversation with Julia Ratty, representing the city's Ward One. Well, Councilwoman Ratty, thank you for coming on the program. I want to ask you a little bit about your background in Sparks and why you decided to stay here.
Okay, well, I was born and raised in Sparks. I went to Robert Mitchell Elementary School, then I went to Dilworth, and then I went to Reed, and of course, stayed here and went to UNR. And I've stayed because I've just continued to have fabulous opportunities that have kept me connected to my community. I've always been really interested in giving back and making my community a better place, and I just keep getting the opportunity to do that, so there's been no reason to leave.
Tell me a little bit about your family.
Well, mom and dad, Bob and Jan. I have a brother named Keith. I am married to husband James, and of course, we have Gus the Wonder Dog who keeps us company. My dad is native Nevada, and he grew up in Bango, Nevada, which not very many people have heard of. Bango is actually, was actually a little railroad town outside of Hazen. And so, you know, Nevada's a big part of our life, and we love being here.
Well, so on that note, why do you enjoy living in Sparks? And what do you tell other people who aren't aware of Sparks about living in Sparks?
You know, I, for me, I love living in Sparks and probably even more importantly with Ward One, I love being down in the core of Sparks. I love that I can get on my bike and ride down to Victorian Square and enjoy all of the special events. I love that I can hang out at the Great Hazen Brewery on the patio during the summer and listen to live music. I love that there's always something going down, going on downtown, but at the same time, it's all very accessible. It's, you know, family-friendly, it is something always going on, and it's just a great place to live.
And you live and represent Ward One, although you're voted by all the residents during the general, the general election, but your ward is probably one of the older wards and perhaps more diverse sports in the city. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, absolutely, and I think that's part of the reason I've stayed too. I really like the older parts of the city that have more character. I love the mid-century houses with the hardwood floors and the plaster walls and everything that comes along with that. And so, certainly, that's what's kept my husband and I busy in Sparks. We, our first house was a brick house with the hardwood floors, and we did some upgrades there. And then about three years ago, we bought another one and got to, it was in kind of rough shape, and got to bring it back to life. And I really do like seeing those older parts of the city brought back to life. So, that certainly is an exciting part of Ward One. And diversity, I love the diversity of downtown. I'm much more interested in being someplace where you don't have to drive as much, where there's lots of different kinds of people, where every house doesn't look exactly alike. I mean, that's the exciting and fun part for me.
Well, now, you're in your, you're going into your second
Well, now, you're going into your second term. You were re-elected in 2012. So tell us a little bit about why you decided to run for city council in the first place.
Well, actually, that goes very back much to what we were talking about. When I decided to run for office was a very different time, just, you know, to put it in perspective. The economy was booming, we were expanding out into Spanish Springs at an incredibly rapid pace. The Legends Project was just starting to come out of the ground, and I saw, from the outside, I saw all the time and energy going into the new parts of the city. The Legends Project, the Spanish Springs, but I didn't see what was happening around neighborhood revitalization and the older parts of the city. And that's something that I particularly am passionate about. So that's really why I ran for office, when I decided that, you know, I've always worked in nonprofits and I've worked in other ways to make my community a better place, but when I looked around for, well, if I wanted to get involved in local government, what would be the right match for me? It was local government, because that's where you really can make a difference at the neighborhood level. That's what I was interested in.
So, and, you know, there are a lot of thorns in between the single rows on the city council. You're the only, you're the only woman on the city council currently. So what kind of dynamics and perspective does that bring to you? Is there any thoughts that you could share with us?
Well, you know, I think there's diversity, there's gender, there's age to a certain extent.
Sure, true.
There's perhaps life philosophy even in some cases. But I do think it's important that we have people from all different backgrounds involved in local government. I think that a representative democracy is just that, that you do get people with different backgrounds and different passions. And my passions are definitely different than some of the other members of the council. I think where we're really lucky in Sparks is that as a governing body, I think we've developed some really strong relationships, and we work well together, even though we do have different priorities and we do have different beliefs on some things. We do all seem to keep the city front and, first and foremost, in our attention and time, and so I think that that's been a pleasure. Certainly, you know, from the time I decided to run, when the economy was booming until when I got elected, when the bottom had just fallen out of the housing market and we were making some pretty dramatic decisions about our budget, things changed quite a bit, and it really then became all about, well, what's the most important? What do we have to make sure that we save as a foundation so that at some point, when the economy turns around, we can make sure that we are back to making forward progress as a city? And, you know, I'm proud of the work that we've done in the City of Sparks over the last five years to make sure that we protected what was important, and we did it pretty well.
You can talk to your city representatives through our website, but now, there's a new tool to reach out and get things done. Want to ask a question, express a concern, or report a problem? A new and powerful program called Sparks Citizens Request is available both through our website and on most mobile devices via the city's official app.
We'll click on this new request here at the top of the page, and you will enter the location of the issue or concern that you're addressing. So for today, I'm going to say corner of Crater and Pyramid. And then you will go to the dropdown of selecting a service type.
Sparks Citizens Request creates a transparent, ongoing conversation string between you and your city on one particular issue.
Making it easier for citizens to get their issues and concerns reported, also be able to track the progress and make sure that those are resolved, and with the downsizing of staffing, the quick access that the staff have via email to get these resolved.
For example, if you report a pothole or some graffiti, you will be able to track your report as it moves through city departments.
You can also upload a photo from your computer or your mobile device. So I'm going to go ahead and add the photo.
You will see what city staff does to respond and when.
Anytime the staff comment on the issue or the concern, they will get an email notifying them of that comment up to resolution.
And you will see when repair work is scheduled and performed. By connecting people directly and transparently to the appropriate city staff, Sparks Citizens Request will turn public inquiries and service requests into real-world community improvements.
There could be a concern for overgrown weeds, as an example, and that would go to our zoning and/or maintenance areas, so they would make sure that it's not a dormant location, and if it is, that would be a zoning issue. And we could send our maintenance crews out there as well and clean up those areas.
And now, back to our visit with Councilwoman Julia Ratty. Let's hear more about the goals for historic downtown's future. So in your role as a city councilwoman, you also serve on a variety of boards. Tell us a little bit about those roles and the importance of those roles.
Well, certainly, the District Board of Health is one that I'm particularly passionate about, you know, caring about, and again, you sort of get the theme here. I'm really interested in the things that strengthen our community.
And you serve on that board because you're on the city council, right?
Absolutely. I am the one member of the city council appointed to the District Board of Health. Of course, the District Board of Health deals with everything that has to do with public health, so it could be immunizations, it could be dealing with the obesity epidemic, it could be making sure that our quality of air is good. I mean, it's a very broad look at public health, making sure that health services are available to low-income families. And, you know, those are, again, are things that are critical to our quality of life. They're critical to make sure that those among us who need a little extra hand get that extra hand, and so I've certainly been excited about being on that board. I'm also the vice chair of the Redevelopment Agency, which has been, again, an interesting time to serve. There hasn't been a lot of resources to do significant work in redevelopment, so it's been a lot of retrenching, refocusing, making sure that we know what our priorities are in redevelopment. So those are two of the big ones. Probably another one of my favorites is I'm the council member appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it's so, you know, obviously, taking good care of our parks and recreation and outdoor activities is so important to the quality of life, not just, you know, in the urban core, but throughout the entire city. And there have been some great things that have happened at the Parks and Recreation Commission. One of my favorite is the opening of Whittaker Park and that open space and making sure that that open space is protected. So, you know.
Excellent.
The boards and commissions certainly add an opportunity to focus on areas that I'm passionate about.
Are there any key accomplishments that you could share with us that come to your mind over the last four-plus years, and maybe some goals that you have in your mind for the next foreseeable future?
It's an interesting time period to talk about accomplishments, isn't it? Because, of course, with the budget plummeting the way it was, I do think that, you talked a little bit about how I'm a little bit different than some of the other council members, and so I do think that one of my most important accomplishments has been making sure that there are diverse viewpoints when we are talking about the budget process or any other issue for that matter, that there is another side to the story sometimes. And then, I think, making sure that the Parks and Recreation Department as a whole, and not just Parks and Recreation, but all of the quality of life elements in the city budget, we didn't lose focus on those when times were really tough. Public safety is incredibly important, and I'm proud of the public safety agencies that we have here in the City of Sparks, but I always felt it was my role to remind people that it's great that we keep people safe, but if they're safe and they don't have any quality of life beyond that, then what? And so really making sure that, you know, all of the departments had a voice during the budget process was important for me. I think those are probably the big things.
And while being a council person is a part-time job, although it sure doesn't seem like it, you do have a real full-time job as well.
I do.
So tell us a little bit about what you do when you're not a member of the city council.
I have the best job in the world. I am the CEO of the Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada, which means that I run, we happen to be the fourth smallest council in the nation in terms of the number of girls, but we are the tenth largest in terms of the geography that we cover. So that's ninety-six thousand square miles, so I'm in charge of girl scouting all the way up to the Oregon border, out to the Utah border, out to Quincy, California, and down to Bishop, California. So it's a huge.
I had no idea.
Yeah, it's a huge territory. And, you know, the two go together particularly well, I think, because it's my job, my day job, is developing the next generation of women leaders, and so I think about that a lot when I'm serving on the city council, about, am I setting an example that I want a generation of girls to follow in terms of leadership? And so I try to be particularly thoughtful about what, not just what I get accomplished, but how I lead, because the girls are watching. And part of what I get to do in my city council job is to be a role model for forty-five hundred girls who are learning leadership skills every day, helped along by two thousand fabulous volunteers who put a lot of time and energy volunteering and helping those girls to develop into their best and fullest potential. So I love it.
That's great. I really appreciate your example, I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate your service, and thank you for coming on the program.
You bet. Thanks, Adam.
And that's all the time we have for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Make sure you follow us on Facebook and Twitter, and log on to cityofsparks.us.